All right, good.
Okay, here we go.
Welcome. Call this being norer, please rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Felton, thank you for handling the invocation tonight.
It's a privilege. The mystic meister Eckhart once wrote, "The only prayer you ever have to say in your entire life is thank you. If that's the only one, then it will be enough." So in that spirit, let us pause in prayer to consider just a few of the many things we might be thankful for. Let's pray. Quiet evenings. Honest people. Fresh ideas. Good conversation. Good health. Challenges worthy of our best efforts. Gracious God, remind us that we are most wise when we don't grieve for the things we don't have, but are grateful for that which we do have in this life. We especially give thanks for opportunities to be in service and are grateful for those here tonight, who are not only members of our community, but those who are also serving as our leaders here in Fountain Hills. May grace, peace, and gratitude be present in this place. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor David Felton, from Fountain's United Methodist Church. Roll call, please, Janice.
Vice Mayor Ashenbaum.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Legere.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Mayor Schlum.
Here.
Thank you very much. Is Mr. Odell here? Yep. All right. I'm sorry?
You've got me.
No, you're, thank you. Just want to, we will go on to scheduled public appearances and presentations. We're going to jump to a presentation by Mr. Roy Kinsey, Chair of the Sonoran Conservancy, regarding a plaque to be placed permanently in the McDowell Mountain Preserve that identifies views from that preserve. Welcome, Mr. Kinsey.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
You may have to hit the PowerPoint button there.
Mm-hmm. That's on.
You know that button, how to expand it?
I know. Next one up.
You don't want it all the way?
Not yet.
Okay, sorry about that.
Not yet.
No.
Here it is. How's that? That's an even prettier picture.
No, I want, Mark knows what I'm talking about.
Oh. Oh, I see.
He'll start the show.
Five.
He'll make it fat, bigger, everybody.
Five. Yeah, down below.
He'll make me come down there. There you go.
Gotcha.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Welcome, Mr. Kinsey.
Thank you for the welcome, and I'm here tonight for the friends of the Sonoran Conservancy of Fountain Hills. These are the people over the years that have contributed to support the preservation movement in town, and the board has taken their contributions to create this, which we wish to present to you tonight, and it's a panoramic of the trail. So everybody knows what we're talking about. If you were standing on top of the Town Overlook Trail, this is what you would normally see, very, very easily. You can see the fountain down here on the left, and you can see the various, mostly in this case superstitions are right in the middle. Anyway, to get to the point, this, thanks to Mr. Jay Schlum, Mayor, he created this. I want everyone to know that.
I didn't draw, I didn't sketch it. I just threw it onto a PowerPoint. I didn't.
He did it, though, and to help us out, and I appreciate that very much. Very much.
I don't like to sketch like that.
So anyway, this gives you, and gives those who climb to the Town Overlook Trail, an opportunity to search the horizon and perhaps locate some of the landmarks that they wonder about. I think it's significant in a way and interesting in another way that the Town Overlook Trail is the first trail that the Conservancy volunteers built back in 2003, five, and three or five. And so it's the most used trail actually ever since. It's a very popular trail. So at the top of that, they're going to be greeted with this bronze plaque. The bronze plaque is down here, and I don't even know if the council can see it over the counter there, but what we're going to do is we're giving it to the town, and then I'm taking it right away and putting it over in the community center where we're going to let it reside for the next three weeks, such that, I have a feeling that a few number of our residents will never get to the top of that mountain. They're not going to walk up there. This way, if they're interested, they'd be able to go into the community center lobby, and it'll be on display. And in the meantime, we'll be building a wall at the top of the Town Overlook of natural rocks that are right there from the location, on which we'll cement this plaque. Thank you.
Very nice. Well, thank, please thank the rest of the Sonoran Conservancy for donating that to the town, and it's exciting to, the people even hiking today that may be familiar will learn a few things about elevations and the names of these mountains and the ranges around us that they enjoy looking at today. I'm not sure if the camera can pick up the bronze plaque there, but it will again be in the community center.
Right.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mr. Kinsey.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Hit it to turn it off. You'll turn it off.
Thank you. All right, our next item for public appearance is a presentation by the Maricopa County Air Quality Department. And the council was able to go out and view the, some of the equipment out in the parking lot prior to the meeting, and which was a good tour. We saw equipment that tests, looks for PM10 particulates, dust included, and also went into a newer trailer that checks for ozone, which I think we'll hear about, and the impact of that here in Fountain Hills and then other areas in the air. And now we have the Director of the Maricopa County Air Quality Department, Mr. Odell. Welcome.
Thank you. My apologies.
Yeah, perfect.
For someone who'd been out this way. I think I was heading towards Tucson according to my directions here, but really enjoy the opportunity to be here tonight and kind of give you a brief introduction into the air quality program and tell you in advance that I'm going to challenge each of you to make the clean air commitment, and we're looking for an ambassador from Fountain Hills to help us spread the word on the clean air program. See if I can make this work. I'm going to start by kind of focusing on just what air pollution is, because we don't, we kind of take the definition for granted sometimes. It's nothing short of the result of man's attempt to attain a higher standard of living. So as long as we continue to attempt to do that, we're going to have a job and we're going to have air pollution to deal with. But it's not a recent issue to deal with. As far back as King Henry VIII, who said, "Whoso shall be found burning coal within the sound of my voice shall suffer the loss of his head." Now, the issues haven't changed much, but the penalties have. But we have other instances, more recent, 1948 in Pennsylvania and London, of course, which gave us the term smog itself. A lot of people died in the use of burning coal. Maricopa County is allowed three exceedance days within a three-year period of time. And when I talk about that, there are federal health-based standards for particulates, ozone, and other pollutants. If we exceed those standards more than three times in three years, we're designated on what we call a non-attainment area, and we're required to develop a plan, an attainment plan, to bring ourselves into attainment. Usually what happens is we inventory the air pollution sources, in our sense, particulate matter, and we look at the standard we want to achieve, and we can basically, very simply, ratio out how much of an emission reduction we have to have in order to attain that standard. Most of the areas in the United States follow that process. There are some, and we are one of the more unfortunate ones to be one of those few, which no matter how much we model, we're not able to show attainment. So we're designated what's called a severe non-attainment area on the federal level. And what that means is that every year, we begin to reduce our air pollution by 5% of that inventory until we reach attainment. So the obligation we have is to reduce our emission inventory by 5% each year, and that's a very big hurdle. You can see that allowing ourselves three exceedance days of this health-based standard, in 2006 had 27 days. So far this year, we've had three. Now, I will tell you that last year, where we had 12, 11 of those 12 days, the state and the county air department believe were caused by exceptional events, wind, and so we make that request to EPA. And if EPA agrees, then we only have one of those days to deal with when we begin to count towards our three on the three-year period. Our problems occur from two issues, stagnation and exceptional events. What is interesting is that on, in no place have we monitored where we've exceeded the standard, where we have not had a destabilization of that area by man. So everywhere Mother Nature, let's say, has claimed and continued to claim her area, that is, we haven't disturbed it. We have an attainment status. It's only those areas where we have gone in and changed the stabilization pattern of the land. What happens if we don't attain the standard or if we don't keep our commitments of what we call this 5% plan? The way the Clean Air Act is written up, we suffer the potential loss of over $7.5 billion in state transportation funds, in addition to an increasingly stringent requirements for air regulations and, of course, adverse health. The presentation I made the other day, one of the city council reps said, "Isn't our first priority to be to protect that $7 billion in state transportation funds?" My response was, "That's certainly number two. The first is our health of the public." But that's a lot of money that becomes jeopardized. If we look at the inventory of just particulate matter alone, you'll see that about 26% of that is associated with roads in one way or another. We've got construction, which is a big portion, 36%, and other particular parts of it. To achieve that 5% plan, we're doing a number of things. We are enhancing our public outreach and education program, because a lot of the issues that we deal with are going to require individual action on a collective part of all of us in order to improve the air quality. We are increasing training and compliance and public awareness. We're making some major changes in the rules that we have. We're looking for revised ordinances to address leaf blowers, vehicle use, residential burning, and in fact, we're also creating an advisory committee composed of interested members of the public, our stakeholders, and city and county representatives. Other types of control strategies that we have in this 5% plan are both traditional and non-traditional. What I mean by that is you have the traditional things like fugitive dust controls, some non-traditional things such as vacant lot stabilization requirements, PM10 street sweepers, which are a challenge for a lot of small communities because they're very costly in a sense. Shoulder paving activities, and of course, one of the more sensitive issues, off-road vehicle use issues. We have very ambitious goals. We're looking to decrease the number of days we exceed the standard. We're looking to engage everyone in the process. We have to reduce our particulates by 5% each year until we attain that standard. That's a very important commitment that we made in the 5% plan to the EPA. In addition, we need to meet the requirements that are laid out in SB 1552. Now, 1552 is a bill I'm sure you're all familiar with. It was before my time, so I'm not going to take credit for it, or the other end of the credit stick, but it does provide a lot of requirements. It talks about signal light synchronization, stabilization of unpaved roads, the PM10 efficient street sweepers, ordinances adopted at the local level to help implement part of the process. One of the things that we did recently, about six weeks ago or so, we held a workshop inviting all of the cities and public agencies to come. We had a very good turnout. What we wanted to do was to set the SB 1552 requirements in front of that group and say, "How can we help you implement those measures? What can we do to assist, to be a catalyst in that process?" It wasn't our desire to implement them ourselves, but we want to be there to help support communities. What we found was a request by those participants that we offer training to the cities and the counties and other entities in the rules and regulations and basic dust certification activities, enforcement training, that we look to help create a community need and use system to share water trucks and contracts for some of the dust palates, that we provide training, again, to the city representatives. We help create a standardized public education program on this issue so that the public, whether they're in Fountain Hills or in Phoenix or in Scottsdale, all tend to see the same type of requirements, and that we work towards contracts with various pieces of equipment. We're very pleased at this workshop. We had a lot of support for it. There were other things. We talked about equipment sharing, public outreach, as I mentioned, and of course, the enforcement. And the cities told us straight out that they just were missing the funding to do some of this. Well, we've created what we call a SEP. We get, we have a considerable amount of money in enforcement penalties, which we're limited to use on one-time activities, so we can't fund the regular staff positions with it. We've created a SEP which will take a portion of our penalty funds, be used to assist the cities that are interested in doing some of these activities, including some of the roadside paving activities. We also have the mobile monitoring activities, and I heard as I entered that you had an opportunity to view our sort of, I want to say new toy, but it's not really new at this point. We've had it for a couple of months. It's still going through the checkout stage, but it's something that began, had its birth about two years ago in the process. The public outreach resources we have available are vast. We have outdoor HPA alert boards, we have radio brochures, doing a lot of local events. We've indicated, actually initiated a policy on no burn days or declared on both HPA and Health Watch days. That's relatively new. Up until this point, burning was allowed, but it doesn't really make any sense for us to encourage burning on days which we think the probability is we're going to exceed that health-based standard. We also have websites, widgets, and text alerts, e-blast communications, all tools which the public can know about when one of these likely days are that we might exceed the health-based standard, and it can change the conduct. It offers them the information with which to do less polluting activities or remain indoors when those occasions occur. We need your assistance. We need your participation in the process. It's the policymakers that will set the stage for us to be successful in this program. We need the assistance of the stakeholders, both the environmental advocates as well as the industry and the healthcare advocates, and of course, the general public, which is the, clearly going to be the benefit beneficiary and the target of our improved air quality control strategies. We're asking you to be our clean air champion, to be the local experts here, to help provide the leadership in developing the outreach programs, to conduct the community presentations, and to create an awareness for air quality issues and permits. We're encouraging you to add the Clean Air Make More link on your website. You might notice that we used to have a little different slogan, and we looked at that slogan. We decided we wanted a more positive one. We wanted to take a slogan and transfer it into a conduct-oriented activity that was positive, which is Clean Air Make More. We're looking for the Fountain Hills to designate a Clean Air Make More ambassador to help us participate in the citizen newsletters and ongoing mailings to residents, of course, the Channel 11-type activities.
Lower that microphone a little bit toward the computer. It may help us with the sound. Thank you.
It's good on this. I'm just not seeing it up there, so I'm not sure.
You guys can't see that?
Oh, this is a video clip embedded in the program. I'm not really sure why it's not showing up on the screen.
It happens on occasion.
But what I can tell you is that this is a video clip which allows you to actually see the air pollution, because so much of it you cannot see. And it is unfortunate that you can't see this beautiful piece of artwork that you did. I will go to the last part of this instead and just tell you that each person can make a difference. You can. Okay.
It's on there separately?
Yes.
That's actually a clip that was taken out of a movie clip out of Europe, in essence. The reason we chose this part of it is because it gets to the heart of the matter that we're after. So much of the time when we say air pollution, people think of a power plant or a stack, and that's certainly a contributor, but the reality is, everything we do is part of that. And so the direction what we're trying to target for the public here is to say, we all have some contribution to the issues we're dealing with. We all have a sense of responsibility to deal with them individually. And there are some things individuals can do. At home, they can certainly do compact fluorescent lights, turn off appliances, a variety of things, as you can see. At the store, we have EPA's Energy Star Products Program, which identifies the more efficient appliances and items for purchase. Certainly, smart driving is a big one. Guess in closing, I want to indicate that we're very serious about our 5% plan. We know it's a tough one in a sense. EPA is due to act on our 5% plan in December of this year, and I think how they will respond to that will depend upon how many exceedances of the health-based standard we have between now and December, in a sense. The other issue that you didn't see here is that EPA recently changed the ozone standard. Now, last year, we were not in violation of the ozone standard, but when they made the standard more stringent, you go back, look at the same numbers we have, we were 18 times we exceeded that standard. So one of the processes occurring at this time, parallel to our particulate air quality planning activities, is a process that MAG will be involved with along with the other entities to bring ourselves into compliance with the new ozone standard. And as I say, we had 18 days, which doesn't mean we were any worse off. It just means that the ruler that is used was sort of shortened, which meant we're now in exceedance of that standard. So we have a lot to do. I look forward to your coordination, your cooperation, and I will offer you and a part of the air quality department any assistance we can provide to help this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the air quality team coming out in the vehicle and letting us touch those new pieces of equipment. I don't think we broke anything, but we tried. It's good to hear that you're looking for ambassadors. I'm sure we've got an abundance of volunteers that we can get plugged into that that have a great deal of interest. As you know, Fountain Hills, most folks here value their views and their health, so it's a priority to keep our air clean here, and we know we're affected probably more so by ozone than other areas, so we're sensitive to that. But it's curious and it's good to hear that it sounded like 11 of the 12 days last year were contributed primarily to windy days and dust being kicked up, it sounds like. So that's obviously something you may have less control over, but some mitigation efforts helped cause less dust to be kicked into the atmosphere. But it sounded like if it weren't for dusty windy weather, maybe we would have exceeded fewer days, which, that was good and bad news to me. I want to ask Councilmember Dickey to comment a little bit on our efforts to address PM10 and some of the things that her environmental working group has done, just to highlight some things, because I think we're proponents of what you're looking to meet as far as our commitments for clean air. We can get the link on the website if it's not already there. I heard you talk about funding, which I'm sure our town manager made note of, for some mitigation funding for things that we may have taken advantage of, but we certainly will look into further. And appreciate you coming out. Councilmember Dickey, you want to talk about some of the highlights of what we've done thus far?
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to brag a little bit. We are taking a lot of steps, and we've fairly recently, I think, but I wanted to go back to 1552 just a little bit, because you and the people at Maricopa County should feel proud and take credit for it, because this was something that we did get conserval pushback from some of the communities. But again, this was a plan that was, that we came up with locally, and it would have been, for lack of a better word, imposed upon us. And so the 5% plan, which was a lot of partners, a lot of people in a room for a long time, coming up with the kind of goals that we thought we could accomplish, and we indeed have to accomplish, so we do appreciate that, and it was sort of a tough time. And to take a little umbrage about the dust, I agree that it helps because we don't have to have that charge against us, but it is still not healthy to breathe that air. So that's really what we're talking about here, like you mentioned before. We're, well, we, what did we do? We did our Green Fridays, which we have, and I don't remember the number now, and we actually have an environmental specialist now on staff that we didn't have before, Raymond Reese, right there, but we were removing carbon from the air by having our Green Fridays. We, when I first came here, one of the things we just do automatically at DEQ is duplex, and that was something that we didn't do. Now, we do that all the time. We, our paperwork here, our agendas are all electronic. We have blue bins everywhere now that we didn't have before. Our vehicles are, are they, they're not all hybrids, but they're.
Several are from our.
Several are hybrids. I'm probably forgetting a whole bunch of things.
We paved alleys.
Oh, oh, definitely, yes.
We've done things to mitigate.
And we had that on, on before. We had the 1552 to pave our alleys.
We did it before our deadline. So we're committed to great air quality because it's valued out here and it's important, obviously, for health, so.
And Mayor, just one other thing I wanted to mention about the mobile unit, which is a very neat thing. I think we all intuitively would know that on a high pollution day, that there'd be more asthma and more things that affect our kids and people that are compromised a bit, and this kind of a tool is a way, we're learning now our intuition is right, that these things really do affect, and there are more neighborhoods or places where these kids are missing school, and, you know, all of these other health issues are absolutely related to air pollution. And so we really appreciate that, that new vehicle and the other efforts that Maricopa County is taking to fight this, because these are real effects on real people, and we are familiar with the people here, out here, that are getting affected by these things. So we applaud what you're doing. One other thing about EPA, we have in Arizona a state implemented. One other thing about EPA, we have in Arizona a state implementation plan in certain areas, because we, we do have problems with exceedances, and the way I kind of think about that, we talk about this at work, is it's like a balloon, and you have a balloon where your plan is there to tell EPA what you're going to do to mitigate these things. If one thing goes, the balloon pops out somewhere else. So, it's something that we're always keeping our eye on, and that's why every little bit we can do improves our health, we protect the environment, protect public health, and protect federal funding.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickey, and thank you again. I was wondering, we did look at your mobile air monitoring equipment. Do we, are, do you or your staff have any recent results to talk to us about, maybe what we found today out in the equipment, or anything to speak of with the use of it out here in Fountain Hills?
Well, the equipment is still fairly new. It's going through a shakedown period, and that shakedown period will probably last several months, so we actually won't put it in the field until towards the middle to end of the summer. The equipment that we have there is very sensitive, and it takes, it takes a lot of quality assurance issues, and you may have heard one of our, our staff, Ben Davis, who runs that program, say, "The only thing worse than no data is bad data." So, we're very cautious about the data, and we don't want to lose our, our quality on that. But I'm hoping that we'll have it back out here, perhaps before the end of the year, and we'll have some information and additional data for you.
And folks in the public who want to get more information, they go to the CleanAirMakeMore.com website?
Exactly.
Okay. CleanAirMakeMore.com. Thank you again for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone from call to the public? Janice?
No, sir.
All right. Move on to the consent agenda. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Roll call, please. You were, you were right on me. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Oshinbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Leger?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Sung?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. Now, onto our brief regular agenda. Our first item is consideration of directing the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, SPAC, to proceed forward with the 2010 update of the Town of Fountain Hill strategic plan as directed in the draft public improvement plan dated March 31, 2009. Town Manager Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. At our last joint meeting with the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, a plan was laid out for you that outlined how SPAC proposed revamping or revisiting our strategic plan. As you know, our current plan lasts until 2010, so we need a new one in 2010. You'll notice on the action sheet that there is no fiscal impact noted on that, and Councilmember Leger reminded me that it's probably important to inform you that although we have this, the proposal now sits as exactly that, a proposal to you that we provide some funding for SPAC in the next budget, that funding would be at about $20,000 to execute this plan, and it is in proposal form in the new budget, but not in the current budget. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone from the public on this item? Janice?
Yes, sir. Robert Dickey? Deppi?
My name is Bob Deppi. I live at 16247 Boulder. I looked at this plan here, and basically, my bottom line is, I think this is a joke. The plan states that the current standing of strategic plan did not ensure a comprehensive dialogue with the entire community, and they can resolve it through the ability to provide input through the electronic media. I suppose a recent example of this is a trash hauler issue input to the Fountain Hill website. We had 300 replies. As I recall, we had roughly the same number of people at the public forum sponsored by the original strategic plan initiative a few years ago. Electronic media is not going to improve participation. 300 replies is probably the maximum number that we're ever going to get from this town. It's hard to get this town to rally behind something. You get a small group and that's it. 300 out of 25,000 is not very much. In addition, the strategic plan was supported by a statistically valid sampling of Fountain Hill citizens of what they wanted and did not want. This plan does not include such vehicle. The plan allows for a commission to come up with its own conclusions. My guess, one that supports spending projects that were defeated last time. And coincidentally, it ends March 2010, just in time to add a property tax proposal for the fall elections that will be desperately needed to support all the projects that the citizens now want to support theoretically. Secondly, is anyone concerned about the cost of this economically depressed times? This will require a large amount of town staff support, meeting rooms, supplies, publication expenses. If the staff has time to support this, then we have too much staff. We need to save money, not find ways to spend it. Based upon the current economic forecast, whatever you project for revenue next year will probably be never realized. I recommend that we do not support any review until our economy improves. I also recommend we do not support any plan that does not have statistically valid controls on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Janice?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Rick or discussion from council? Let me first maybe get a motion. Someone want to miss, wish to make a motion?
Mayor, I move to direct the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission to proceed forward with the 2010 update of the Town Fountain Hill strategic plan as directed in the draft public involvement plan dated March 31, 2009.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Any, now discussion. Council? Questions, staff, discussion? Councilmember Hanson?
Maybe I could ask the manager to just kind of give an overview of what the $20,000 was for.
Say Andrew.
The $20,000.
The, Councilmember Mayor, the $20,000 is a sum that is going to be utilized for meetings, activities, materials, data collection efforts, and so forth, and it will be absolutely necessary that we do these outreach efforts in order to do this. Instead of, I think one thing that's very prominent about this plan that's an improvement over similar efforts that I've ever seen is that SPAC is actually going to go to the people, not just hold events and hope that people show up, and so, there'll be expenses associated with trying to execute this public outreach program, and that's basically what the funding is for. If Audrey has anything to add to that, is that pretty much what, so, I hope that answers that.
Well, and I think the sense I got, it was more like a not to exceed, and if they didn't need the full amount, it wouldn't be spent.
Sure. That goes for every line item in our budget, and we'll, we'll do our best to be as frugal as absolutely possible, but this is a, this is an effort to try to gather a consensus from 25,000 people, obviously, and so, that's a, that's a big task. And so, I'm sure I speak for SPAC and say that we're grateful that those resources are available to accomplish this, this very, very big and important task.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you much. Next item, council discussion direction to the town manager. I think we heard a couple of things from the Clean Air folks, maybe a request to get the web link on there, and the next item is, oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. The quarterly update, I'm sorry, Rick. I thought that was the next item.
Yes, so, thank you, Mayor, Council. During the goal-setting retreat in February of 2008, similar to this year, the council identified eight primary goals in this current year. A second retreat was held, with management staff to develop specific implementation plans and identify resources necessary to carry out the goals established by the council. I'm pleased to report to the council and to you, Mayor, that it appears that we are well on track to realizing the goals that were set in 2008, 2009 budget. The exception to this would be the goal related to the development of the Elm and property, which, as you know, will be considered by the court on April 20th, but that, that reality has not allowed us to complete that goal, but the others are well on track to completion, and we look forward to year-end report, when we report that, that we have completed all of the goals for this fiscal year, and look forward to working with you to implement and realize the 13 goals that you set this, for the coming budget year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Rick? Thank you very much. You don't need a motion to accept your update. That's good. Now, move on to council direction discussion. All I can think of are the items that are mentioned in the presentation by air quality and requests to get some things on the website, share information on there. Efforts, was there anything else?
I will be providing some direction to planning, and particularly, our environmental planner to, to also include in some of his efforts, seek out pollution mitigation funding as part of our overall strategy to seek out some of those funding sources, not only through DEQ, but if there are some EPA funds also, we'll do a review of that and report back to you on that. And then, I'll be meeting with Katie, too, our community affairs person, to see how we can partner with DEQ in order to get some of this material out to the public.
All right. I think that also covered our item eight, so, was there anything else you needed to report to us, Rick, tonight, or?
No, I think that, that would be it for now, Commissioner.
All right. We're almost ready to adjourn. Just want to make sure everyone in public and in the audience is aware that our beloved Keith McMahon's service is coming up. It is on Thursday, the 23rd, at Christ Church at 4:00 p.m. The community is welcome to attend that, as well as on Thursday, the 23rd of April, a community center reception at 5:00 o'clock in the lobby of the community center to honor Keith McMahon as well. So, hope to see you there. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.